Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approved minutes from December eighth, twenty twenty five, regular city council meeting? John, you got anything?
Nope. My move reapproved. I'll second.
Any discussion? Mr. Kluger, you okay?
I'm good.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda? Please burn through these, Jake.
Yes, sir.
A, approve pavements and dispersments. B, approve twenty twenty six utility deposit interest rate. C, approve resolution twenty twenty six zero one, designate official depositories of funds. D, resolution twenty twenty six oh two, in support of O E M S ground ambulance cost collection report. E, approve termination of liquor store clerk. F, approve termination of volunteer firefighter. G, approve E M R hire. H, approve fire relief contribution increase. I approve Warrior Ave design agreement. Who's got questions on that?
I want to approve consent agenda. I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Public comment? You are public. Would you like to comment?
Go ahead today.
All right. Chuck, you're later, buddy. You just gotta wait a second, bud. Casey, what do you got for us, buddy?
Not a whole lot of updates, I guess, but kind of some future things coming up. Streets Department there, we will be either jumping on with the county for a crack fill, chip seal. Kind of depends on what they got going. Sometimes we can go with those guys to get a better buy. It's measured up about three thousand millennial feet of crack fill that we need to get done this year.
What streets, bud?
Oh, gosh, got a list of them. Just a little bit on Kingston. That one's been good. East South Street, a little bit on Grant, Dash Drive, a little bit of Decor Ramsey Sprague.
Gotcha.
And some old highway. I think this year with the moisture and the warmup, water's been getting in there. I mean, the roads are the worst I remember as far as being rough, so.
Gotcha.
We can get them sealed up in the spring better so we can avoid some more of that water.
Gotcha. Anything on Sunnyside, Casey?
That pavement's so shot, it's just not worth.
Okay.
I mean, it's so alligator cracks are so many that nobody would even seal something like that. So we're definitely on borrowed time with pavement in a lot of areas of town. And then I guess for the spring, summer here is whether permits, we'll get that roof on that new commodity ship. Water department, we had a water main break on North Second and Grant intersection on, what was it around New Year's? Something like that, so got that guy buttoned up. Sewer, we're looking to do some lift station rehabs. We've got Sunnyside one that needs pretty much everything, a control panel, pumps, rails, all that stuff. McPhail Lift Station, we'll get a new control board. I think pretty much everything else is in good shape on that one. And then Grand Street, we call it East Lift Station. I wonder if that one's new for control board as well. We've been having some problems with skating communication on that guy, so those three were all budgeted for the sewer department here for the year. Docked wastewater plant, still very slow for them guys to get back and do much anything. There's still items to be buttoned up. And then we've had some warranty issues. One water booster pump kept spraying water all over for six, eight weeks now. We're told in a few weeks they'll fix it, but no. We've also got a automated belt that's giving us some grief at the headworks. So hopefully it gets some resolve on a few of those things. Stormwater, the city staff will be looking to go on the Winnebago Estates on the backside, kind of cleaning up some of that tree line by that pond. Just kind of tidy things up here so the ground freezes up and probably get the seed and stuff in the spring when we're warming again. Buildings, that bleacher building up at the ballpark, kind of had a standstill with that with frozen ground and all that, so we'll pick that up in the spring again. And parks, those dugouts, I think we've got a little bit of money put away here from last year from a few donors, Fire Department and Legion. We'll start, I think we're gonna just weld steel frames in the shop here when we got a little time, do as much of that done over winter as we can.
You just gonna do steel roofs over them?
Yeah, steel roof, you know, simple, efficient.
Lasts forever.
Yes. And zoning, we've had a lot of activity there, I guess quite a few permits coming in, or applications, I should say. So the next two planning commissions will be pretty busy. That's what we got going.
Thank you. Anybody got anything for Casey? Jake?
Just for some upcoming meetings of my own, I have a meeting with our attorney for the wastewater treatment plant project tomorrow. Hopefully we'll be talking about final payment and final negotiation there. There's a meeting concerning the school district's daycare on Wednesday. We've been doing these every quarter roughly, just kind of get a feel for how their daycare is running, what they need, and just childcare overall. We got some liquor, liquor store clerk interview scheduled for Thursday, and then we are gonna meet with the county. Everybody in the county, I think so, for, just for a zoning issue that we've been working on for the last two months or so. Something keeps popping up, so we're gonna hopefully fix that. And then next Tuesday, we have our, kind of our monthly progress meeting with their engineer that will be mostly focused on Warrior. That same day, we're gonna meet with Houston County about Winnebago, and we're gonna also meet with Mindot about scoping for twenty thirty through twenty thirty two, which means the next projects after the roundabout and seventy six resurface, the next phase of that will be forty four from Main Street going south. We're gonna get about a five-year jumpstart on some of that. So, and that will, we've had early conversations about additional trail and stuff like that along forty four, so we've already started some of this, but next Tuesday will be the first big introduction for exactly what they're planning on doing. And then that next week, Friday on the twenty third, I have a meeting with Greg Davids and with the librarian as well. So looking forward to that one. We've got a lot of questions for him. And then just kind of touching on some of our bigger plans for the year, we expect to have the Deering Estates affair finalized very soon here. And then we'll be able to get into moving on some seeking out developers and others, other projects like that. Warrior is our, probably the biggest project that we're gonna focus on this summer and all that. Just trying to make sure that we get all of our funding figured out with that, no matter what, we're gonna run that road. We may not pave it this year, but we will have a drivable surface by the end of the summer. And so that one's very much looking forward to, and then we've got a lot of grants to send out this July and hopefully get some work on funding for our industrial park project as well. Not sure that we'll break ground, but we'll at least have a very good start on that.
Well, sounds great. New business?
A. These are two housekeeping items to get through very quickly.
I forgot to say we're gonna take F and move it to next meeting in new business. Should've said that right away. So A is appointments to positions, boards, and committees.
So starting with that, everything, everything is pretty much the same, but I'll mention once I find this sheet. Thanks, Bob. The key appointments that are changing are all on the Fire Department. So now we've got Jeff Wingham as Fire Chief replacing Kevin Jacobson. First Assistant Chief is Alex Betts, who replaced Jeff Wingham. And the second Assistant Chief is Ben Logging, who replaced Kurt Zender. And then the new captain and assistant training officer is Benny Stitzman. And then the Anna Hochschild takes over for Dylan Becker as Fire Marshal, and I believe that's the, that's it for the changes. And then for council committees, the only change is the mayor is gonna replace Dave on the E D A, and the E D A is going to change from the third Wednesday to the fourth Monday of the month.
I thought the mayor was already on E D A.
He was not.
Okay.
Took a year off.
We have a library board position expiring?
Yes, we do. I left that on there. The board itself usually lets me know what's going on with that one. I don't get a heads up of any kind. But I don't know if those, I don't know if that, I don't know if they've met yet to make that change, so I may get that. Maybe we'll make that update for the second meeting in January. I'm not sure.
And I guess I'm, I don't think, her first term might be expiring, but she's eligible for a second term. I believe that's the way it is.
So she might just be renewed?
Right.
That happens. So I'll get those, I'll follow up with the library director there, and I'll get that answer for you, and we'll get that finalized.
So you don't wanna finalize this tonight then, Jake, or what do you wanna do?
Well, that's the beauty of this one is they don't get a choice, so it's the mayor's decision, so he, there is no vote, so it'll be final until the next meeting.
You don't get a vote on it?
No, sir.
I'm curious about Fire Marshal with Adam Hochschild. Does he need training for that?
It's, they don't do any official fire inspections or anything that's tied to any actual building code or anything like that. Really, the Fire Marshal position is more of a spotting hazards on it if they're invited type basis, things like that. They'll help out or they'll weigh in on certain planning functions, but we haven't really used them in that capacity very much.
Does he do commercial though?
No.
Well, because billing, billing came and.
Oh.
And did ours.
Fire Marshal role? Okay. That might have something to do with his state qualifications. He probably came as an electrical inspector.
And then, and then he said we didn't need.
Yeah.
Okay.
You wouldn't run into anything with the, with the state Fire Marshal with that.
So we're good with A?
Yep.
B, designate twenty twenty six official newspaper of record.
Okay. So we went out for bids at the last meeting in December. We got two. The first from the Caladonia Argus is a three dollar per inch charge, three dollar per inch legal rate, and three dollar display rate. A little bit of an increase from last year, I believe. I'll get there eventually. And from Fillmore County Journal is a seven dollar per inch charge, three, seven dollar legal rate, seven dollar display rate, and seven dollars per inch for twenty twenty five financial statements. Does anybody want to take a look at these?
Which one are we going with?
Well, that's up to you. So they're pretty clear. Argus is four dollars per inch lower than the Fillmore bid.
What do we average a month for fees for the newspapers?
I do not know that off the top of my head, but let me see if we've got.
Who is the official paper for twenty twenty five?
The Caladonia Argus was last year, and last year was the first year that we started going for bids. Other than that, the Argus has been the official newspaper for pretty much every year before that. And I don't have an invoice for either right now. But I mean, it's a budgeted expense. It's, it has not been out of the ordinary in any time. But what happened was we were not on a set legal rate until we went to this bid, and so different, just different implications ended up being more expensive, whereas this kind of gives a flatter rate.
I'm gonna sound, I'm gonna sound dumb here, but will we break our budget if we go with seven dollar?
We're definitely not budgeted for that high, so I'm not, I can't answer that off the top of my head.
I'm just saying, if their, their paper goes to everybody, you don't gotta buy it.
And then.
You wanna communicate with people.
So the cover sheet of their bid is making that same argument. They have more circulation. It's free.
Could we negotiate with them? I'm thinking it's better for, I don't.
Why do we have an official paper?
Why do we do a lot of things?
Well, I don't think, I don't think you can, I mean, if it's a bid, a closed bid, I don't know if you can negotiate. I don't think you can.
We'd have to reject all and go off for bids again. But as far as the first question, why we do it in the first place, where we have a legal requirement that if there's a newspaper in your town, you've got to publish your, like, your public hearing notices, things like that. We, I mean, just speaking from perspective of these and what we do, it'd certainly be easier to do everything online, but that's just a requirement that we've got.
Well, isn't Caladonia Argus our, our paper, our Caladonia community? I mean, I know Fillmore is the county, but you know, we're not even in Fillmore County. You know, and Caladonia Argus is our paper.
For this purpose of this meeting, your options are to accept one or to reject them both. We could talk about negotiation, but this bid has worked pretty well the last two years.
Do we usually put something in the Argus every, like, once a month, or is it every week?
We have, so the Argus, a lot of what we do is advertising, wherein we have a lot of different salutes and things like that that we put in the paper. But for legals, it's only as needed, so there's no, can't really say for certain how many applications we're gonna have to, or how many public hearings we'll have to notice, and then ordinances is a crap shoot. There could be three in a year or zero in a year. I know we have, we've had some discussions about at least one that we're gonna talk about this year being possibly a snow emergency, but that's the only ordinance that we've got really planned.
Otherwise, Jake, we've got our spring cleanup, fall cleanup, pool.
Yeah.
Announcements, our water quality report of the year as we posted.
Sure. Our financials, which is why we bust out that separate rate there.
And I'd say probably one, maybe an average of one public hearing notice a month.
Oh, do you think it's that high?
At most.
Yeah. And then we're doing like thirty to sixty bucks in salutes and stuff like that a month and everything else that we're noticing. It works fine the way we're doing it. Yeah.
I think people are used to looking for that stuff in the Argus too.
Yeah. We certainly get a lot of traction. I mean, when we, we put out, every R F P we've done, we've also done in the newspaper, and we've had a lot of interest just from that, so it seems to be working.
How about the coverage of council meetings?
That we don't advertise. That's just, that's there on free will.
Yeah, but is that getting covered in both papers?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, definitely. And then, why no, we've, Charlie's been steady. You've been.
Oh, I know they're in there. I just, they're out there in the Argus or not.
Oh, yeah, they've, yeah, we, they cover, I think mostly cover from our broadcast.
Okay.
Now our broadcast quality has gone up quite a bit in the last two, couple of months, so that only gets easier.
Well, that's one thing I've talked to about the Argus recently, is the line on YouTube.
Sure.
But this is for one year. It is Caladonia Argus, lower bid. I'm in favor of the Argus for this.
Is that a motion?
Yes, my move to accept the bid from the Argus for twenty twenty six.
I will second that. Anyone wanna discuss anything? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Chuck? You're up, buddy. There's nobody here to take your picture tonight, so you're okay.
If someone's gonna take pictures, get Sharon up here, because she looks a hell of a lot better than this guy.
Thanks for coming here too.
I went around about a week ago, and you should have obviously seen one of these. If you have any questions on it.
I have two questions for you. One has to do with this and one has to do with something else. Just explain to me why we need to do it the way you wanna do it with buying the land. I know you have a reason, because you're a smart man. I just wanna understand it, Chuck.
I, you know, I introduced this to you August twenty fifth.
Yep.
But this has been going on a year prior to that.
Yes, sir.
Took me a long time to talk to the owners to sell that land. And there were certain stipulations when they did sell the land, okay? The, one of them was that runoff water, they don't wanna go through the hot seat happening in storms, so that's in the other sheet to receive, and the other one was they wanted the fence, and the other one was if it went to a library, they'd sell it. So.
Gotcha, brother.
It's, it kinda makes sense, let's say the. Well, I'll just tell you like a yes. There were some questions to one of the wives, said, let me get this straight. You sold the land. You didn't get any money. You didn't sign anything. We're still paying taxes and insurance. So the point being is I don't want this piece of property to slip through our fingers because something wasn't handled right. So I'm here to see me with this because I wanna clear up a lot of stuff, so we don't go down the road and say, well, golly, that didn't make sense. So if this doesn't make sense, then I'm gonna do a better job explaining it. I wanted this as simple as it could be.
I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Why you write the check in and you write a check to us?
Well, if I buy it, and then I sell it to you, I have to pay three and a half percent deed tax, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Then I gotta pay attorney fees, and all of a sudden I'm close to a five thousand dollar bill, and that doesn't make any sense. We didn't gain anything by doing that. Absolutely not. So the understanding I was with the owners of the property is that the city will buy the property. I'll give the city the money, they buy the property, we skip that expensive step that doesn't benefit the library at all, so.
Gotcha.
And so we're at the point now where some things need to be handled, and I think this is one of them. Because I think the city, in, in, in the agreement here back in August, it was agreed to be surveyed. The property, okay? So what a perfect time to get this done. I don't know if you can survey in the wintertime or not. I was gonna call a surveyor, but I thought, well, you guys would know it better than me. But if you're going to buy a piece of property, it would seem to me smart to survey it first so you have a legal description of the property. Now, Casey came out and kinda helped us figure out where the lot lines are, where the property lines are, and that's fine. And, and I'm sure we're close to being, but I don't wanna be on somebody else's property when you're building a building. That doesn't seem to be a good thing to do. So by surveying the property, which was agreed to back in August, now would be a good time to do it. But I think that before I wanna serve by the property, I wanna get the money to actually own the property, buy the property.
Sure.
So that, that's, and then you're gonna get into core sampling. And now we have to discuss, well, we don't really own that land. Can we just go on it and start digging around? That eliminates another problem. So this is just looking ahead a little bit and saying, let's avoid all those problems.
You know, Chuck, when the last survey was done?
I don't know if there was ever a survey done. You know, in town years ago, years ago back, you know, here, you know, this lot to that rock is your property, you know. And I don't know that there was ever a survey.
I just thought maybe Moros would have had a survey done when they purchased.
No, they did not.
They didn't.
No.
Had the shock to Spanky, they get one done?
Yeah, no, it was, there was never one done.
He never surveyed it when he bought it from Chuck?
So this is.
Why the hell do we have to? I get what you're saying, Chuck.
Well, I, I just, I wanna do things right. I don't wanna come back five years later and say, well, what the heck were you thinking? So I'm in the habit, if you don't, yeah, I sold my property here. I had it surveyed first. I didn't want any problem with, with the adjacent neighbors that we were over, you know, and that was it. I learned a lot when I surveyed it. I didn't realize we were about ten feet over into our neighbor's property. Didn't know that because the fence, we thought the fence, the old fence, that was the property line. Well, the old fence is not the property line. And I found out the city has a ten-foot easement back. I didn't know that either. So you do learn something, and I don't wanna get into property disputes if I can avoid it.
So the owners are aware of this?
They're fully aware that I'm coming here tonight to see if we can't get this handled.
Have agreed to sell it to the city.
Right.
Subsequent to a survey.
Now, I don't know how you're gonna handle it. If it was me doing it, I'd get the surveyor out there. I don't know. Can you survey in the wintertime? It's a, there is really much not snow on there anymore at the moment, but I, why couldn't you?
Casey?
I mean, you could survey anytime of year. I do know there's no pins out there. I did look for them. I guess I don't know that we really need to do one just by legal description and measurement off the corners. I mean, we're, we're really close with the inches of knowing, you know, what those lots are. You know, until we know for sure that this project's gonna happen, I wouldn't really recommend putting any costs into it as far as actual doing the survey up there.
Just by, once we get farther along, we'll do it, right?
I'm back here trying out evidence, but I don't think a purchase agreement with the date on it, you know, that the meet, the last conversation of, you know, if we don't have funding by the end of this year, it's not happening, sort of thing.
That leads me to my second question. What if it takes two years? Is it still worth it?
I'm not interested going down into here. I've had a city say, Chuck, we'll send a limousine for you.
Yeah.
I'm old, I'm old.
That brings about another question, though. You said that the current owners would, are willing to sell it if there will be a library put on it. So what happens if that doesn't go through? Are we in breach?
Well, I would say no. Everybody's doing things, is.
So that's not.
They, they know this, everything, everybody's doing things as well as they can as we handle problems that come up, situations that come up. I'm just trying to get ahead of the ball. That's why I give this, so you understood.
Yes.
That the thirty first of December is a solid date.
Yep.
You know, and, and I just don't wanna go beyond that. I don't have to, I don't need to.
You know, it's just, it's.
I think if the city is, if the city residents are interested in this project, that's more than enough time. If they're not interested, another year won't help.
Would you be upset if we didn't do a survey? Would that be a problem for you?
Is it a problem for you?
We agreed to it a while ago.
You know. I, I, I don't care because I guess in the long run, the city's the one's gonna have to deal with the mess if it isn't right. Now, I can tell you, Casey can vouch for this. We have some issues there with the property. I did move the property. I guess that'd be north two feet.
The building?
The building.
You mean?
Yeah, the, the building. Because according to Casey, you, there, we were running to, correct me if I'm wrong, Casey, we ran into issues where we had it because of the.
Some, some setbacks there.
Of the county setback.
Yep.
On the, on Main Street.
Yeah, and we also kinda talked about a few of the future maintenance items and stuff on water traffic, snow handling, things like that.
So now, we're not probably, as I understood it, we're not in compliance with the setback on Kingston. If I understood you right, Casey.
Um, yeah, so it'd be ten feet off the back of sidewalk on Kingston.
So here's what you need to know. I reduced the size of the building. You guys got the magic wand. There's ten feet of sidewalk, excuse me, eight feet of sidewalk all the way, well, eight, eight feet of sidewalk on Kingston and ten feet on Main because I moved, I moved it two feet to avoid any conflicts with the county. I set it so when you look down the road, the buildings were all in alignment, the old fence method, maybe you call that item.
Yes, sir.
But that made sense to me, but apparently there's not, but the sidewalks, if you do walk down, go down, they're not the same size. I didn't know that until I started measuring. They're all over the board.
Yep.
So, anyway. So here's the deal. If you understand this, I, I tried to make this as clear as possible.
You did, you did a great job, buddy.
And there's not, there's, there's no trickery here or anything like that. I'm not thinking that at all. I'm not gonna come back here with fifteen orders and say, oh my God, because. Going to come back here with fifteen orders and say, oh my God, because I'm not interested. I ain't spending my money. As a matter of fact, you should know this. Tim Murphy said he would, uh, handle the paperwork, uh, pro.
Pro bono?
Pro bono.
Gotcha.
So, he told me that last summer. So I imagine that's still good. What I'm here for is that, that I want everybody to understand what, what's going to be happening here. I don't want to have confusion. I don't want that. I've known it a long time, but don't leave confusion on the table because it will come back to bite you, so.
So Chuck had clarified the deadline you set is for. Funds for the library and building itself.
Hey, you guys can keep right on raising money, but I'm gonna call it quits.
So if we have the full amount needed to build the building by December thirty first, you've got it that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
You bet. I've worked my butt off here for the last year, better than a year, year and a half maybe, and. So, I'm into this as much as I can be into it, but I, um. I'm not a doddler.
Well, I think the deadline is good for two reasons. One, inflation, the two brought up, and secondly, the dis, which is sort of hang for years and not, nothing would happen. This puts a sperm under people to get moving. And, um, if it doesn't work, as you said, then we're back to square one or.
Well, it'll be a shame. It'll be a shame because we, we have spent a lot of time on this project as far as before we even brought it to the city and, uh, you, you, you don't have a. Really understanding what a library is and a modern library until you go into them and look around and see. Was it the library in Winona? Was saying that, uh. The librarian director is not the person that checks out books anymore. So, I mean, I envision the community room, the big screen TV up there. Where you could have virtual classes for all ages, you know? Uh, so you could come and have, it, it's expensive to move people around, but if you can have classes through virtual. I think it'd be good. We could hold like twenty, twenty-four, twenty-eight people, you know? I see that room being used a lot. There's a hundred, there's a thirty-four different organizations. That we identified that could use that.
It's really a business center.
Yeah, so.
Wasn't that important for, uh, the Senator too?
Yeah, they said you'll, you'll have a lot better luck getting something done if you call that a community room, you will have a conference room, so.
Well, I'm in. What do you guys have?
Yep.
Bob?
Good. No time to back up now.
Yeah, all right. Let's, somebody make a motion and somebody make a second.
I move we accept a contract agreement presented by official.
Well, second. Any more discussion?
Uh, one question, I guess if it doesn't go through, the city has the option to continue ownership.
Yep.
We don't have to sell it.
Yep.
Okay. I, I guess it explains that.
There's no trickery here.
I've dealt with you too much, Chuck. So then on that survey, will we be fine if we do that just prior to building?
You know, I, I don't have a problem with that, fellas. All I think I was, I want to get into this project, I looked at that as a, cause I know how. I know how my property was out there and I thought I was so thankful that, that, uh. I did a, uh, survey on my property when I surveyed.
So, um, who has ownership of the profit part?
Well, I suppose the telephone company still does, but that's interesting because there is a, uh, Chuck Allison put in a concrete wall there that runs all the way down that side. And it's a pretty substantial concrete wall. So, I don't know how that works because, you know, in the old days, it was kind of held to shelter, I think, and now you'd have to have setbacks and, you know, I don't know what. I don't know how that all works. I don't know where the setbacks are, if there's setbacks or.
Personally, I'm in favor of the surveys.
You know.
To be confident going forward.
We. Just for two, two items on that, um. With anything, are we, is it all right if we have our lawyer take a run at this too to just make sure everything's? Good to go? So I'm saying, essentially making them all contingent on legal review. And then there is one.
You don't want to make me not give you this check because of legal review.
I mean, I don't think. I don't know. I really don't see anything. I mean, I think you spelled it out pretty good that there is no risk unless we want the risk. Um, there is, Casey's brought up one good point is that once that, once we buy it and once it becomes public property, there's certain things that we have to do to discharge it, which would just mean if we. Probably doesn't go, we have to give the land back. It would take a little bit of doing, just some public hearings and things like that. Not a massive deal, but just some things to keep in mind. Um, but again, I, I think that the agreement is written, obviously. Purposely written in the way that it's not meant to put any risk on the city and I think I definitely appreciate that. Um, so for that, I mean, for purpose of making this go, this is a necessary step, so.
Stephanie would have a, a fund to hold this check until.
Yeah, the way that, um, the way that we kind of have everything. Set up at the moment right now is that we would start a new fund, a project fund, and then we've got some fundraising infrastructure. For the most part lined up where I know system where people can donate online and things like that. So we've got a lot of that ready to go. Uh, we would just need to pull the trigger on it.
Sooner the better.
Yeah, it's up, sign up there.
We signed all three of them or what's the deal here?
We gotta finish voting first.
Yeah. All in favor, I?
Yeah, who seconded that motion?
David did.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, I.
Unanimous, Jake. Do you want me to sign this one, Chuck?
Well, you can sign one, sign both of these and you'll have one for your copy and one for my, my copy. Now, there's no trickery here. I just want to make things clear. I don't want confusion. Confusion causes hard feelings.
Can I ask quick when you dated your check?
Next week?
Well, I tell you the truth, I was gonna do this in December, but you.
Oh, you could still date it in December.
Oh my golly, I did?
Oh.
Good for you.
The only problem I see with this, Chuck, is that it's twenty twenty-six.
Did I say twenty-five?
You both did, and I did on the first one.
I'll, I'll.
You want another one?
This is twenty-five.
You want to start over?
That isn't bad.
That's my job at work is to see that stuff.
I suppose this makes it illegal anyways, but who cares?
I think, I think it'd be okay, buddy.
Did you initial it?
Uh-huh.
If you change.
No, that's enough of this paperwork. Okay, here's your check. By the way, um, you have to tell Stephanie. That, uh. Here's the deal I made with her. I won't charge any bills to the city unless I come in with the invoice and give you the check. So far, I've just painted out of my pocket.
And we won't get any bills until we have some money in the bank?
Well, that makes good sense. I wouldn't be, so I just want you to know that. I ain't creating any bills. If I do, I, because I understand where we're at, where we're.
Sir.
You can't bring invoices in for her to pay when she has no money. I assume she has a separate account. Okay?
So if we take this to Moros, they'll know what it's for? They're waiting for it or the owners, I should say?
Uh, Brennan knows all about it.
Okay.
I kept him fully in the loop. I told him I'd do that. Cause I don't want any misunderstanding there either, so, okay.
Did you say anything on when we would be making the purchase?
Well, I don't think I dolly. I, I don't, I don't want there all of a sudden, supposing somebody walks in the door and says, hey, uh, I'll raise that twenty-five thousand. I mean.
Well, we just need the legal review, I guess is all we're gonna.
Yeah, there's a couple of steps that we have to do just in order for the city to purchase real estate.
It would be a good idea for the city to reach out to Brennan. And just say, you got the check, we're working on paperwork or whatever you want to tell them. And so it just, just a good courtesy thing to do, I think.
Yep. You okay with that, Jake?
Yeah.
Or Casey or whoever, you want to stop and see him tomorrow, case?
Well, there's.
Or Jake.
There's just certain things that we have to put in motion in order, just for the city to buy real estate, but I will take care of all that and we'll talk to them.
Gotcha, brother.
So we got more paperwork.
Thank you, Sholpeys.
More paperwork, that's exactly right. It's gonna be a lot of this.
Whoops.
I don't need any of that. Okay, so, we're on to the next phase. Which is fundraising. And I'll be darn honest with you, I've had a hard time with it. So we gotta try a different approach and this is the approach we're going to go with, which is. I was very fortunate to run into this gentleman behind me, uh, shirt. His wife said that she would give him time off washing dishes. To spearhead this committee, donor ID committee, okay? Uh, the objective here is to have people working for you. And they don't even have to go to a meeting. All they have to do is sit down, come up with a list of names of potential donors. Everybody in their, in their, uh. World knows people that might be a possible donor. If they can give the names, it'd be good if they give the name and address or some way of contacting them, you know? I guess I should have wrote that on here, but, so that. Brian can simulate all this information, the list of names, he's gonna form his own committee.
Kind of like a call committee to go visit. When you're asking for twenty dollars, you can do it over the phone, but when you're asking for larger sums, they need to, they need to be done in person and they need to answer questions.
Any rate, he, uh, he's graciously agreed to do this. I think I got the perfect man to do it. I really do. That's important. Uh, he's been what, thirty years or so?
Uh, yeah, just a shade under thirty years of corporate selling and, um, yeah. I have no problem talking, getting in front of people, getting in front of groups and, um. Talking and explaining a good cause. And I have, and I have time on my side. I just recently retired from, um, from that, so. Chuck, Chuck saw, Chuck saw that I had free time on my hands and, uh, he, he, he asked Tracy first to make sure that.
You didn't know?
Kind of wish I would have come now. We, we, we have a good start at the library already, so, um, there is a, that, uh, the be, the library meeting you said on the twenty-third.
Yeah.
Either. I will not, I'm gonna be out of country, but I would like to be part of that meeting, so if there's some way I can zoom, I can zoom call in on that or. Uh, be a part of that in some way.
Be in my office, so I might be able to just call my.
Yeah, I think, I think, but I'd definitely like to be part of that conversation.
Is that the one with Greg Davis?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I am going to write letters and give information to Davis. I've got packets. That I left upstairs along with the smaller, the smaller boards that have, uh, you know, that the library's on, the design of the library and exterior design and interior design, there's two boards. That I made sure they get. So the more information they give them about the project, uh, the better it will be now. So, I'm going to be visiting with them. Throughout the process, they might need a little cheering on if you want. So, but anyway, but you guys know people. So I'm not letting you off the hook. You know people. If you look at the second page, you can see. I included the information. I mean, you know, uh. Probably Jeremy Miller probably isn't too affected by votes anymore, but I think Greg, Greg Davis is probably looks still a little bit sensitive, so. If he feels there's a swallowing of community effort for this project, it will make a difference. So. Uh, that's something I hope that, that the residents of California pick up on, you know, write your representative and your senator. It makes a difference. I mean, I know that when the last project I had. I even knew how to get into the legislative offices when they were locked up after night. Cause I went around and put information in all their doors. That takes a long time to do that, so nobody kicked me out.
I will say that usually after the first of the year, Greg gets into his fundraising. Might not hurt to send a donation along with your.
And forget, forget, and it's important not just do that, but say, you know, I kind of forgot to sign the check, so if you would. Anyway, so, can you guys help out?
How you all? I'm curious how this works. Are people, if they make a donation, they can put their name on something?
That's correct.
That's how it.
That's correct.
That's a pretty smart move by Chuck in that regard to give, I mean, it helps, um, give them an idea of like, you know, larger donation, larger, larger donators, um. You know, get more exposure. I mean, it's, uh.
It'd be nice if this was exploded a little bit so you could see what you were putting your name on. I mean, it's, to me, it's hard to read.
Okay, I'll work on that.
Bookshelves, I guess.
Well, they, plaque was from presentation posters that still live in the library, right?
Yeah. And there's thirty of these. Well, I, I, I bought thirty of these smaller, uh, plaques, if you will, there. And thirty of them, and, uh. There's, there's two of them, so there are thirty sets. And then I think it was eight of the big ones. Uh, I've taken a few around town, but not everybody has room in their business for the big ones. If you don't know what I mean, just go upstairs and look at the library, you can see.
Well, at the open house, uh, someone donated one thousand dollars to some odd spot, that really, yeah, the day. Said, said another person was donating fifty thousand. So it's building on some of that momentum, it would be good.
Yeah, um.
Well, I think the more that you would donate some art rooms with your, you know, so that family left can create their own legacy for the family.
And you might have a group of families, for instance, the children that you may have. Certain family like the Troogs and they might get together and throw in three hundred thousand dollars just to, just to. I mean, I'm just thinking out loud.
David Fitzpatrick did.
Well, when you talk about the deadline, we, we are gonna work hard on this. We're gonna pump, we're gonna pump the wells within the empty if we can, and we got to twelve thirty-one to do it. Now, I'm gonna be gone, but I know that he'll do an excellent job. I'm very pleased that you took this on.
I, I. It's, it's my pleasure. I'm, I mean, I, uh, I, I go in this eyes wide shut because, um, I've never done any, anything like this before, so.
It would just be a bunch of old mistakes.
I'm, I wanna, I'm looking to build a committee now. I mean. I would hope it's before the next two to three weeks. I'm gonna reach out to some certain individuals, hopefully that I can get them to invest some of their time, um, over the course of this year, so.
You guys have any questions?
I think you answered mine, Chuck.
And, yeah. So. My thinking is to put enough effort in to get this done and it isn't just going door to door. If you read, if you read this page, you understand what I'm talking about. If we can get. Uh, this project done here and the funds matched, you're at three point two five. Two fifty to go.
Are there any, um, grants on the horizon for the coming years that might be available?
The one, um, there is a USDA grant that is specifically for public buildings and that. One used to always just say, community centers has been expanded to include libraries, so that's pretty perfect for what we're looking at. And it's pretty, I mean, the community center. And it's pretty, I mean, the community center angle of things is extremely important, hit it exactly on the head that making it. Serve as much to the community as possible is how you have a good case for it, and so, community center and a library is even better.
What about that, Mary C Murphy?
That, um, the awards on that one were capped at about ninety-eight thousand. Um, and so we are still gonna look into it, as far as I understand, but there's just not a lot available.
Here's the problem with that, they want a full set of blueprints. And blueprints have been a cost of eighty thousand plus, so what are we gaining?
What uh?
I really think the place to look is in private. Private grants, like Cargill and McRae, all these foundations, you know, and there's a lot of them out there.
Does that, does Ireland Falk, does he have a limit to what he's willing to donate to, so big projects like this?
Um, I'm not sure, my only experience with that one is on the smaller side, but there. You gave me about three other names to consider.
Kathy Nelson, I guess is. You're familiar with that.
Yeah, well. Carnegie built a bunch of libraries back in the day, maybe some of that's still kicking around somewhere.
Well, just one more question, believe we stopped wasting here. Have a great vacation, drive safe. Yeah, thank you.
But I just wanna say, congratulations everyone, this is a very exciting move towards Caldonia's future. A cornerstone right on that intersection with our lights, it'll be spectacular for people that are supposed to see. So congratulations.
It's a big deal.
Thank you. Have a good year. Thank you.
All right, D, approve SCBA purchase.
So in turn, you are a few quotes for SCBA's, what we call SKIBAs, or actually, I only call them SKIBAs, everybody laughs at me for that, but. Um, that's self-contained breathing apparatus, and it's what our fire department wears on every single call, every single day, so. Uh, ours are, our entire slate back there, all twenty-three of them are gonna expire in May of twenty twenty-six, and there is, they become. Worse than a paperweight, after that, there's absolutely nothing to do with them. Uh, we used to send them to China, but even their standards are, have increased, they cannot use reused ones, so now they're worthless. Um, and so we got three quotes. Before the NFPA standards, because theirs, their standards change every five years, which this is something that we hear a lot about, like the emission standards and all that, but it affects fire department equipment as well. But so we've got three quotes from McQueen coming in at. Two hundred and twenty-one thousand. Um, there's a two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar quote in there also from McQueen, but that's expired, and then. Uh, the Alex air apparatus, two hundred and forty thousand, and then. This one, I wanna make sure it's actually on this sheet, I think it got transposed wrong, but there's an M and, an MES quote. That says eleven thousand four hundred, that's the price per unit, so that comes out to about two hundred and sixty thousand. Let me know if you don't have that one, cause I.
I don't have, I don't see it.
Well. Got messed up into in here, but.
I don't, we don't need it anyway.
Well, I'm not gonna recommend it, no, but, so, they range from two hundred and twenty-one thousand to two hundred and sixty thousand. Recommended is the McQueen quote of two hundred and twenty-one thousand. That with the Taylor Family Farms Foundation grant of fifty thousand plus sixteen thousand leftover in public safety money means that we're gonna take. An actual budget hit of about a hundred and fifty-five thousand if you go with that McQueen quote. Uh, this is something that we've been dreading for fifteen years collectively, because the, you expect to get a grant for these. Tanks, and then the government shuts down and no grants were awarded right when we needed it most, so it's. Actually, I've been telling the fire department for three years not to worry, cause I guarantee that grant will come, and then I was wrong, but this is. The best second option, because we weren't expecting to come in under budget at all on something like this, so we think wound up pretty good on this deal.
So I'm not familiar with this device, maybe it has an air tank?
Yes, it is.
That's refillable, or how does that?
Yep, the bottles are refilled on the truck and in the, the station, but then, um, a lot of the expense comes in, then you buy a harness for each firefighter, and then. Uh, those are fitted to them, so that doesn't drive up the cost, but that's just what makes them special, but they, so. Every firefighter back there has the harness, has a bottle, multiple, and then, um, they're bringing that to every call, there's usually four on every truck that are loaded already in there, and then. But you, they wear them on every call. And there is no getting around it, we can't, there is no corner to cut in a situation like this, we can only buy new.
So would the new devices have a similar, uh, fifteen-year lifespan, you think?
Yes.
So rural, rural fire pays half. But their half comes in after the grants and the public safety aid?
Um, in the past, we had talked about that grant and expected the grant to be split, the public safety aid, we've never talked about splitting that, so the final cost to the rural. Um, I don't think would be set today, and we have a meeting, we have a mid-year, an annual meeting in February and a mid-year meeting in August with them, and there's. This will be a very big topic to discuss with them about how they're going to pay for it, because if we, even if we said. We needed seventy-two thousand seven hundred and fifty whatever tomorrow, that's not possible, so there's gonna be some work with them regardless, and so we wanna figure out, but I mean. Essentially, the way that a relationship works is we have a bill they're responsible for half, and it doesn't really matter how that's paid.
Did you answer my question?
I think so. I know I covered the grant and the public safety.
So the grant does come off before we build rural fire?
Oh, sure, yeah, I think, but that would be about it, so then their bill would be.
So what, the public safety aid doesn't come off?
It's to come off our half of the bill. Uh, that's, yeah, that's what I would say, I mean, there's, there's. There's never, there's no, there's no contract language that says we have to share our revenues, and their responsibility from the contract is to maintain. A levy and a fund balance suitable to pay for half of these expenses, so if you take it just from the contract language, they need to have half. Whenever we deem appropriate, but that's, so that's what we'll be working on in that next meeting in February.
So we just need to do this before May first?
Yes.
Okay, well, I think we're obligated to go ahead with it.
Is that a hard expiration, like what makes them expire exactly on May?
They're certified by the NFPA, and they come in and they slap a sticker on all of them, I went and checked.
I was just curious if it was, you know, if it was depend, if there was some. I, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, there's, there's a lot of rules and regulations in fire fighting that I would say. In rural departments, smaller departments, they usually, they prefer just to get the job done, but this is one where there is no, no wiggle room whatsoever.
When's, when's the price increase gonna go into effect, any idea?
Um, with the new standards, and they're just adopted some, at some point in twenty twenty-six.
I guess, but we, we will be able to purchase these at the old price then?
Oh, the, this quote is for a set of air tanks and harnesses that it would, we would be getting it under the wire if you buy these ones. And I don't know when exactly that changeover would be, but likely. If we were to push it off for too long, if you push it off even into March, I would not be certain that was the time that they.
Yeah, we need to just take care of this. So we can, we can do this before we find out if rural fire can afford to pay for theirs, or?
They've already, I mean, they signed a contract that says they'll pay for half of it.
Okay.
So. We just make the decisions and then let them know, and it's with the way that their funding works. Um, just because they're, I mean, their levy is set, they're gonna go, they are going to get this money or reimburse themselves, however they choose to do it, they're not gonna take it in tax breaks until twenty twenty-seven, no matter what, so we can't wait for them.
No. Well, I'm, I'll make a motion to move to approve the SCBA purchase.
From McQueen?
From McQueen, correct, for two twenty-one five.
I second.
Any questions, buddy?
One you have, two good?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All same side, motion carries.
I'm sure we'll figure it out.
Prove snowplow purchase.
Yeah.
Casey?
So what we got?
Here's our budgeted snowplow for twenty twenty-six.
Um, I guess we always bring capital purchases forward, but. Um, basically what we got going on here is, uh, Minnesota passed a law a few years ago that we pay sales tax on any non-emergency trucks, so.
We have to pay sales tax on our snowplow.
So this.
Don't we get it refunded?
Unbelievable, no.
No.
No, so this will be the first truck purchase that we've had since twenty seventeen, so this is new to us, so. Essentially, what it did, um, as I put in the report, is it put us over, um, by twenty-three hundred dollars. Um, I mean, it actually put us over closer to nine thousand, um, but we pulled off as many options as we could, just to. You know, make it as bare bones and not have to transfer very much money.
Stuff you need?
Well, let's put it this way, so. From the time I quoted trucks last year till now, they've gone up quite a bit, so. We're not gonna put an underbody plow under this truck, cause that's about twenty thousand more, so it's not even in these quotes, we're okay with that, we'll still have one truck with an underbody. If we need to do any hard scraping, um. Then the other options that we gave up, I guess, just to try to conserve the money here was. They have what they call a trip trip plow, where the bottom foot of it's actually spring loaded, so when you hit stuff, it trips. Just the bottom versus the whole plow, and you got less chance of ripping manholes out of the street, but. Um, not the end of the world, um, some cab lights, and then bangboards along the box sides, we'll just use lumber and put them on ourself. Um, and then the plow edge is actually, um, if we were to upgrade to a carbide there, about two thousand more, so we've. Taken all those options out, knocked off about seventy-three hundred dollars just to try to keep it down. Um, so that's kinda, that's where we're at with. With the reason why we're here looking for a little bit more, um, so they over just twenty-three hundred, and basically asking for three thousand, just cause we got a little bit of lettering on the truck. Um, we plan to keep the old radio and put that in, so we'll probably have a little cost there. Um, otherwise, a new radio would be over three thousand dollars as well, so. Um, I guess essentially leaves us with two quotes here, uh, quote one. Quote two, the vehicles and the builds are identical. Um, quote one comes in at two fifty-two, three eleven eighty, and quote two, two fifty-eight, eight forty-seven fifty. Uh, so my recommendation was to go with quote one. And then, uh, also asking you guys to do like a transfer out of the twenty-five street budget, we had extra money there this year. Um, that, that extra three thousand dollars should come out of that, uh, twenty-five street budget. Um, I know in steps here at the next meeting, we'll talk a little bit more about, you know, when she transfers money over extras and stuff like that. So that's where that would come from.
How long does a blade last?
Yeah, so standard steel, we'll get a good year out of them probably, um, we currently do run carbides on everything, I take that back. Uh, the two small trucks, one's got carbide, and I think we're on year number four. Um, so, you know, the next set that we put on, we would go with carbides again, and then we just purchase them out of our, our annual street budget for. Um, you know, vehicle maintenance and stuff like that. In fact, I might even have a set of carbides sitting down there that might fit this one.
Are those cutting edges reversible?
Uh, oh gosh, I don't think so. Um, I think they just, they, they're usually like seven, seven or nine inches tall, and we take them right down to about four.
Okay.
You know.
So you go right down to the holes, probably.
Pretty close to the back around, you know, you know.
Is there a reason we're switching over to Western Star?
Um, so what we have now is Sterling's, and I guess they don't make them anymore, the X Air. The Daimler that owns Western Star, I believe, took over, uh, whatever was, uh, the old Sterling company. It's about as cheap of a truck as we can get into, you know.
Guess what you're asking for, I'm good with, guys.
So the fifteen thousand dollar trade-in, what, what happened to the vehicle after you put it to? Just curious.
Um, so both the guys I've talked to here, they try to pre-sell these trucks to people that are either a township or something looking for an old truck. Something super affordable, or farmers will buy them for mineral haulers, feed haulers. Um, and so far, neither one of them had anybody that was dedicated to a pre-sale. If between now and the time we sign this, they come back with it, we might get a few dollars more, but fifteen thousand from quote one was his highest price he would give, and. Uh, twelve to fourteen is actually what they said on quote two.
And the lifetime of the new truck would be similar to the old one, you think?
Yeah, we, we anticipated a twenty-year lifespan on this, you know. Um, it's pretty much the industry standard that when they're bought, you run them twenty years, and then they're about at the point we're at currently. Um, there is just a few municipalities starting to go to like an eight to ten-year trade. Um, so there's none of those that have come back available for use to purchase. Um, every one of the dealers I've talked to, they just said they don't exist, there's no such thing as a good used truck, you know, in this category. It's either new or it's what we're trading now, pretty much.
I thought I heard you mention that, I see, you wanted to move three thousand from twenty-five street budget to twenty-six. Didn't you mention that there was gonna be like five thousand additional?
Um, I've got it penciled out to, we're over by twenty-three eleven eighty. Um, but then in the staff report here, I just asked for an even three thousand, so that we got a little extra letter and put the radios in.
That'll cover everything.
Yeah.
How soon would this new truck be delivered?
Um, so the beauty of this with both of these builds, or I guess, either one, I guess, they're both gonna go to the same outfitter to do the equipment, the box, the. Side wing, the front plow, um. These will go into production in September, August, September, um, so we would have that truck here for sure by October.
When do we pay for it?
Um, the truck we would pay for pretty much right up front here, um, and then the build through, um, the supplier up there would be, let's get his terms on here, I forget what it says here. That's pretty quick. Uh, ninety days.
Ninety days from the contract or the bill?
So we would, we would actually have two transactions here, one through the truck supplier and then one through the outfitter. Um, it's his terms, say, equipment to be paid for in full ninety days from completion of equipment install, or ten days after sale if sold earlier.
You gotta pay for it right away.
I would anticipate it, you know? Um, if we don't take one of these options here, these are literally the only two I found that truck sales had a, a vehicle in the queue to be built. Um, whether it's Universal Truck in Dealsville, or, excuse me, Tillmaster in Minnesota. Um, they're a year and a half out, two years out, something like that, so. I think we got pretty lucky to actually have a couple trucks available. And then you know what, the, the build times just been so far out since COVID that they pretty much keep putting trucks in because it's what everybody wants.
I'll make a motion to approve the snowplow purchase. With, uh. Moving additional three thousand dollars from twenty twenty-six, cover sales tax and whatever.
I second.
More discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same side, motion carries.
Ready. Thank you.
What color is it?
Orange.
Remove number after next meeting, so go to G overtime reports. I keep this for next meeting.
What was this one testing today?
That was, uh. Did we do that, that was separate from. It was not Light of Caldonia, that was just a different, um.
The, the Legion?
Yeah, Joe did it, the Legion. Just a promotional deal, it, uh, I guess resulted in a pretty decent uptick in sales there.
Good. That was part of library fundraising.
I thi, I mean, I, that's. Promotion is what separates everything apart, you know, it's.
I don't think it affected the Bush Light sales.
Well, we could use more of those too.
You guys good with that stuff? All right. Next regular council meeting is scheduled for Monday, January twenty-sixth. At six PM, and I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good to work.